All right, I see 1 o'clock, actually 1:02 on my watch, so we'll go ahead and get this zoning board appeals meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Here.
President.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner. Chairman Russo.
All right, you should have gotten the March 8, 2018 minutes in your packets. Any comments, changes to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I actually have a couple suggested changes.
Oh. I'm sorry, you paused.
If you wouldn't mind just holding that motion for one second. Page 1, just for the record, I have, on roll call, I have Commissioner Lussain as being both present and absent.
That's because I have a split personality.
Well, we don't go there in this session, but I think we should correct the minutes to reflect that he was just here, so eliminate the reference to him being absent. On page 2 of the minutes, for the ZBA case number 3039, it has pro temp chairperson Jackson closing the public hearing at 1:23 PM. That should be changed to reflect that chairperson Russo closed the public hearing. And on page 3 of the minutes, for ZBA case number 3040, the same reference to pro temp chairperson Jackson closing the hearing, that should also be corrected to reflect that chairperson Russo closed the public hearing. Those are my suggested changes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Lussain, second.
Second.
Commissioner Jackson.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Same sign? All right, minutes have been approved as amended. Now, as we head into our regular business, I want to remind everybody that if you do have cell phones, to please either turn the phones off or put them on to vibrate or silent mode so that the session is not disrupted in any way. If you do have to take a call for any reason, please leave the chamber before doing so. If you are planning to speak, please be sure to fill out a blue form and give it to Madeline. We only take testimony at the podium, so when you get up there, please give us your name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone. Once we close the hearing for each of these specific ZBA cases today and go into deliberations, you will no longer have an opportunity to speak on that case, so please be sure to present any testimony you want to present while you're at the podium. And again, kindly keep your remarks on point, addressing only the specific case at hand. So with that, if anybody's planning to speak today, you could please rise for the swearing in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
All right, we will start with case number ZBA 3044. I will have Ms. Leah Allison present the matter into record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing on the request of Leanne Schmidgall of Habitat for Humanity to obtain a variance from the City of Peoria Unified Development Code, Section 4, Point 2.4, which is building envelope standards to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 14 feet, to reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 4 feet, and to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 7 feet for the property located at 1031 Northeast Monroe Street. So I have up on your screen here, the parcel that's highlighted. It is zoned, multifamily, R6. It is surrounded, as you can see, by the same zoning, R6 multifamily residential. The petitioner is requesting a variance from the building envelope standards to reduce the various yards for a proposed single-family residence with an attached garage, as you can see on the site plan. So to highlight the various yards, this is the front yard that has requested the first variance. The side yard of 4 feet is the second variance. And the rear yard here, proposed to be 7 feet. And then the corner of Morton does not require a variance, so just to clarify. These variances, as I mentioned, are requested to allow for the construction of a single-family residence with the attached garage. And I will show you, here's a rendering. It's this property down here, in the lower corner. The petitioner states that the narrow and shallow lot shape creates a hardship for development. In addition, the property is located on a corner, which requires two front yard setbacks, thereby reducing the buildable area of that lot. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of the requested variances based on the three criteria. The first is reasonable return. The subject property's ability to yield a reasonable return, in staff's opinion, is diminished without the requested variances. Application of the district setbacks would render the lot as unbuildable. The second criteria, unique circumstances. The size of the property is unique, as its depth at 78.5 feet is significantly less than the depth of a 12.5 feet of other properties on this block. So, to point that, as you can see, this parcel does not have the same depth as the majority of the parcels on the block. So we're finding that as a unique circumstances for the property. The third criteria of character. Staff has reviewed the neighborhood and finds other properties with front yard setbacks that are less than 30 feet, side yard setbacks which are less than 10 feet, and rear yard setbacks which are also less than 25 feet. So we feel that the proposed or requested variances would not be out of character for this area. We have recommended one condition of approval, and that's the replacement or repair of any deteriorated or non-ADA compliant sidewalks and curbs along the front edge of the property. Whether concrete or brick, which I imagine there probably is some existing brick sidewalks in that front edge, if they're deemed to be in need of repair or not ADA compliant, we would request that that be included in the condition of approval to provide the criteria for that. Are there any questions of staff that I can answer?
Any questions? Thank you, Leah. Now's the opportunity for the petitioner to present testimony. Good afternoon. If you wouldn't mind, please stating your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gene Lear. I live at 809 East Behrens Avenue, and I am the Executive Board Secretary for Habitat for Humanity for Greater Peoria Area. I'd like to first begin by thanking the staff, Leah and Ross. You guys did a great job in helping us through this process. Second of all, I would like to state that we concur wholeheartedly with the staff recommendation and the condition also. And so, at this point, I'm simply going to entertain any questions that you may have concerning this request. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioners, any questions? Well, that was easy.
Thank you.
Much. Commissioners, any further questions or comments for staff before we proceed? Any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed to the findings of fact.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, do you want to invite any public comment?
Oh, thank you. Any other comments on this matter? All right, hearing none. We will proceed now with the findings of fact. For the variance to be granted, the following criteria, all three of which must be found to be true. Number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zoning district. True or false? Commissioner Jackson?
True.
Commissioner Lussain? Commissioner Wagner?
True.
Commissioner Lyons?
True.
I also say true. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. True or false? Commissioner Jackson?
True.
Commissioner Lussain?
True.
Commissioner Wagner?
True.
Commissioner Lyons?
True.
I also say true. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. True or false? Commissioner Jackson?
True.
Commissioner Lussain? Commissioner Wagner?
True.
Commissioner Lyons?
True.
I also say true. So let the record reflect that. These zoning board appeals have found that all three criteria have been met by unanimous vote. Can I entertain a motion?
I'll move to allow the variance.
Second.
And just for clarity, are you moving to allow that variance with the condition?
With the condition as stated by the city.
All right, so a motion to approve the variance with the condition as stated by city staff, made by Commissioner Lussain, seconded by Commissioner Lyons. Roll call.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lussain?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Russo?
Yes. Congratulations. Your request for variance has been granted.
Thank you.
At this time, the zoning board appeals is going to go into a brief recess. We're good to proceed? All right, never mind. We will now, we will now proceed
Very brief.
with case number ZBA 3045. And I will turn it over to Ms. Smith to present on behalf of the city.
ZBA case number 345. The request is to hold a public hearing on the request of Shane Sharp to obtain a variance from the City of Peoria Unified Development Code, Section 4, 2.4, building envelope standards to allow an increase in the maximum allowable density in the R6 multifamily zoning district for the property located at 255 Northeast Randolph, parcel identification number 184329014, Peoria, Illinois, Council District 2. Mr. Chairman, before I continue with entering this into the record, we had their attorney outside when we did the swearing in. Do you want me to finish first or get him sworn in?
We can give him sworn in, that's fine. Madeline, if you wouldn't mind.
Can you please stand?
And anyone else? Oh, and Robert's new too.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
You may proceed.
Thank you, thank you. The subject property is .26 acres, 11,325.6 square feet in size, zoned R6 multifamily district, and is surrounded by the same district. The subject property is developed as an existing house with nine units and a carriage house. In 2013, zoning certificate number 133008 was approved for a transfer of property for nine units in the main house, none in the carriage house. Prior to that date, four units were known to exist in the carriage house. In 2018, zoning certificate number 18-35 was approved for a transfer of property for the same nine units in the main house. No units were approved at the carriage house. Note, the main house was converted to the nine units prior to 1944, possibly in the late 1930s. The petitioner is requesting the variance from Section 2, 4, excuse me, 4, 2, 4, building envelope standards to allow an increase in the maximum allowable density in the R6 multifamily district from 15.02 units per acre to 49.566 units per acre. Approval of this request would allow an increase in allowable density from 3.9 units to 13 units. Note, the existing approved nine conforming, nine units represent the equivalent of 34.62 units per acre. Therefore, whereas the existing nine exceed the allowable density by 130%, the request to reestablish the four additional units for the total of 13 would raise the density to 230% of the maximum allowable density. Petitioner states the property is too small as a hardship. To the contrary, the property has a lot size of .26 acres, which is 11,326 square feet. The minimum lot size requirement for R6 is 7,500. So it's 51% larger than the minimum required. The R6 district has a maximum density allowance, again, 15.02 per acre, or 2,900 square feet of land per unit. The existing approved nine units in the main house comprise site density more than twice that exceeds the allowable density in R6. The maximum density allowed for R6 of 15.02 units allows for only 3.9 dwelling units on .26 acre lot. So of course, the 13 would further raise the density to 3.3 times the allowable density. No evidence has been submitted to support the claim in the application that the carriage house originally contained four units. And evidence submitted thus far does not support that the apartments were part of the original use of the carriage house. Staff requested petitioner submit any available evidence that may indicate the house was originally designed and built for four living units. Staff's recommendation is to deny the density variance request due to lack of hardship and failure to meet all of the following criteria. One, reasonable return. Increasing the density to allow additional rental units is not the only factor affecting reasonable return. A number of other factors include debt liabilities and operating costs. Further, the applicant was aware at the time of the purchase that the property, that the property was only permitted to be transferred as a nine-unit multifamily conversion with no approved units in the carriage house. Therefore, the request to increase the density as a means to collect additional rent represents, presents as a desire to increase financial gain. Two, the unique circumstances. Particular physical surroundings shaped, topographical conditions of the specific property involved do not present a hardship to the owner as related to density. A unique need for the density variance has not been established as other properties within the neighborhood contain carriage houses. They are not used for residential rental units. The property, even without the variance, is already nonconforming with 130% greater density than what is allowed by strict application of the code. Finally, the practical difficulty in this case, wanting to rent 230% more units than what is allowed per code may not, may not be created by any persons presently having interest in the property. Note that the practical difficulty was created by the current owner as it was transferred and purchased with written knowledge that the property was only permitted for nine units. Further, the transfer certificate for the previous purchase also stated nine units, not 13. And finally, three, character. Surrounding neighborhood contains a mix of multifamily and single-family uses. Unless the property converted and maintained to meet, is converted and maintained to meet building and fire codes, occupancy of the carriage house by four additional families could substantially increase danger of fire as well. Additionally, 100, 230% over what is permitted impacts surrounding neighborhood with that 230% increase in related items such as trash, containers, vehicles, and general service traffic. We do have, as part of your packet, you can see, we've got the zoning, surrounding zoning map. We have our aerial photo. And then we have the application information that was submitted by the petitioner, including photos. This is the main house. And then the carriage house. We also included the most recent transfer of property certificate and of course, findings of fact. The petitioner is present, along with a representative of the petitioner.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for Ms. Smith?
Oh.
Yes, please.
Sorry to be remiss. I also, in front of you, we received a, some additional testimony from a resident who was not able to be here and at your wish and when you wish. I can read that into the record.
I was going to give the other commissioners a chance to ask questions. That would be my question for you, is I do have a copy of this email and now would be the appropriate time for you to read it in the record. Yep, go ahead.
Hearing. This was received by Fulvio Zurla of Zurla Properties. And it says, as, and this is actually directed to a different staff member, Josh, who took his call. "As I relayed to you during our phone conversation of today," which was actually today, "I am the owner of 245 Northeast Randolph. My property is adjacent to 255 Northeast Randolph. I'm opposed to this variance to increase the density of 255 Northeast Randolph because of the density of this property is already too high and does not have adequate off-street parking. If this variance is granted, it will negatively impact the economic viability and value of my property, as well as the standard of living of the occupants of my property." And then it is emailed, but, so he just signed it with his Fulvio and Zurla and then his address and phone number.
That email is going to be in the evidence as an exhibit for the city?
It's, would be considered public testimony. We quite often, we, as a practice, will accept written testimony if someone cannot be present, and we enter it into the record on their behalf.
Yep, exactly. All right, any questions from staff? Yes, Commissioner Lussain?
Thank you. Did I understand your presentation to be that there are no other carriage houses currently being used for residential purposes in this area?
I'm not, I'm not aware that none. I'm not saying it absolutely.
And they're asking for an increase in usage from nine families to 13, is that correct?
Four additional in the carriage house, which did occur at one time. But they lost their nonconforming status during a separate process, which is transfer of properties.
Oh, so it was used that for 13 at one time? Oh, so this is not totally new. And then, I thought I saw on the record that the building was originally built in 1902, is that correct? Something like that?
The, the most, you have it with me. The, this, it shows up in the city directories at the time of the date, 1944. It's listed. I don't have, I know it was built before then. I don't have an exact date or proof of that. It wasn't submitted.
Do we know how long it was used for 13 tenant occupants as opposed to a lesser number?
No, that was also, as we'd indicated, we asked for some support for that. And that we do not have. But we do know that the nine units were not questioning. It's just the status of the carriage house. It was previously deemed nonconforming and said in that they had to prove continuous use to keep a nonconforming status. And that was not proven back to, I think it was 2013, 2013. And then again, just recently with the certificate that was attached with the packet, because it was already lost and it wasn't being contested at the time. But also remember, that's a separate process. What they're doing here is saying, okay, it's lost. We're requesting a density variance so that they can establish whether they were there before or not. Can they have an additional four units? Does that meet the criteria for a variance set forth in our code?
Now, one of the city staff concerns was with life safety, especially regarding fire hazards, is that correct?
Yes, we have had conversations among staff, but we do not have, you know, nothing was submitted by a design professional stating- nothing was submitted by a design professional stating one way or another what needed to be done. Um, we, we did even talk about trying to coordinate for scheduling. We'd offered as a courtesy to just kind of walk through with building inspector and fire. And we did, the petitioner did communicate with us through some photos and videos, which if, it's their call if they want to submit it. It's not germane to the criteria. We, we have that available, but I don't have direct feedback from our fire department or the, our building. They just weren't able to. But again, that, the criteria doesn't hinge on building. It was just yet another thought of something that can contribute to, um, issues with this.
Okay, so they really have no knowledge of any additional hazards being created by an increase of usage from nine to 13, other than the fact that there's more people?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not saying that the, that building codes are the reason it should be denied. It was based on what I explained in the.
And the extra four units, are those like one-bedroom apartments or what are they?
Well, at this point, we have not been able to be inside. And from what we can tell through our knowledge, they're not actually fully built out at this point. So I don't know how many bedrooms or size or layout that they are requesting. We just, right now, the, the density is based on the unit being there itself. And then as far as how many people can be there, it's twofold. It's definition of family for how many unrelated, but it's also by bedroom size, depending on how it's laid out. Um, I believe it's 70 square feet for one and you need 50 for each occupant, but you need at least 120 to have two. And it goes from there.
But there's no indication they want to exceed the present footprint of the property? In other words, they're not gonna add on?
Oh, no, I have not been advised of that. And the petitioner can speak to that. They're shaking their heads, but they can speak to that.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Lusane, any other questions of staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Lyons, please.
When I went by there, it looked to me like the property to the north, I think, um, not, not the, the other side from the emailer. Uh, the carriage house next door appeared to me to be occupied. There were several air conditioning units in it and just, um, and it also, so it looked to me like it had similar parking spaces in the back as to what would be available on the front. So I don't know if they're, have less occupancy in the house itself or if, um, you know, or, or has that got a nonconforming zoning to it?
I'm sorry, I was, was that question for me?
I guess, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We were conferring with our.
It looked to me like the house next door, the carriage house is occupied. I don't know. I wasn't able to, I didn't get out and, and make a tour. But it, it had looked to me like it had similar parking availability. And I did notice there was three air conditioning units in that carriage house. So it looked to be occupied to me. I don't know if that meant there's less, less units being rented in the main house. Uh, but has that got a different zoning to allow for higher density? Because it's, and they were, they were similar in size, eyeballing it from the street and the alley, both the carriage house and the house itself.
Do, which direction?
This is not the emailer direction, it's the other side.
259. I, I, do not have specific knowledge. I do know it is a very mixed neighborhood in terms of what's there. Um, it should all be zoned R6 so they have the same density requirements. As far as how they were established, possibly like this house, a lot of that stuff happened even before, you know, our first zoning ordinance came into effect in 1931. A lot of this stuff goes way back. But as far as if it was converted, if they have to prove continuous use, there's a lot of factors. It's possible it hadn't been transferred. And at time of transfer is when they have to prove continuous use. So I'm happy to investigate specific properties, but I don't have specific knowledge for these other properties.
Well, it just seems like a very similar property to me where the usage next door is allowable and the usage here for the petitioner is, is not being allowed. I guess I have questions about that and I don't know what the.
Well, and character of the area, I mean, that is, um, the variation if granted will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the public or other property or properties. So if you feel as a commissioner that it fits right in, then, then you feel it meets the criterion.
Anything else, Commissioner Lyons?
I don't think so.
Any other questions? All right, we'll now turn it over to the petitioner to present their case. Thank you, Kim.
It's a countdown clock, it's making me nervous. The, uh, my name is Jack Teplitz, I'm an attorney here in Peoria. I'm in a dual capacity here. I, I happen to live across the street from the petitioner's property. Uh, my wife is the president of the homeowners association over there and she would be here today but for the fact that she had a conflict, a work conflict. And, uh, so, but I'm also here to represent Shane, the petitioner, with regard to his petition. Let me just correct a couple things, or not correct, but add some more information on the questions that were asked. Uh, the property next door, which is 259 Northeast Randolph, has a carriage house. It is occupied. Currently, according to the city records, has 12 units. Have that, if you wanna see it, based on rental registration, which includes both the house and the carriage house behind it.
Yes, we'd like to see that, that'd be great. Mr. Teplitz, before I forget, if you wouldn't mind giving us your address, I noticed you're across the street.
Right, uh, let me give you, uh, my office address is 240 Northeast, excuse me, 401 Main Street, Suite 1530. And my home address is 240 Northeast Randolph Avenue.
Thank you.
So that they are very similar in terms of, of operation. But let me talk and, and, and give you a little bit of history here and I'll try not to take too, too much time. This property, we moved into the neighborhood in 1981. And from the information that we can obtain, we know that through 1981, we knew there were four units in that carriage house which were occupied. And we believe it was around 19, oh, excuse me, uh, it was around 2012. There, and I, and we'll present to you, there, there are meters, each, each of those units are metered separately. According to Ameren, they were used up through 2012. The, just a brief history, the property was, the owner at the time sold on a contract for deed the property. And within a year or so, the purchaser was in default. And there was a foreclosure action that was filed at the, in 2014 that went through the Circuit Court, the Court of Appeals, and an attempt to go to the Illinois Supreme Court. And the end result of the litigation was that the purchaser at that time was in default and he lost the property back to the original owner. But it took until in the middle of 2017 for that to happen. And during that primary period of litigation, the units were not occupied. And so if you wanna argue that there was a 12, more than 12 months, it was, they, they, they weren't occupied during that period. Uh, I could argue exigent circumstances, but we're here to say, even though, even though we may not have it, we're asking you to approve the ability to get it back. Uh, let me address the first, um, clause. And I've got Shane here, so I may ask him some questions to verify the information that we're providing. Shane prepared with our assistance a financial analysis of the property and with and without the four units. I have copies. Make it simpler, if I can run through the numbers and then ask Shane if he, you know, if, if those numbers are accurate as presented to you. Is that, would be the easiest way for you to do it?
I'll be fine, please proceed.
The purchase price, now the first one that you have shows with, with the four uni, oh, excuse me, with the four units in the carriage house. And the purchase price is $150,000 for the house. Uh, the renovation cost of the house would be 130,000. The carriage house is 50,000. The total renovation costs are 180,000. Uh, then there's additional appliances and fixtures of $12,500 that, because most of the fixtures in the house have been taken out to be replaced with a renovation. So you have a total cost of $342,000 in the house. If you turn the page from there, you show that what is proposed for all of the units, and this may help answer the question as to how big the units are. There are 10 efficiency or, um, units. That means there are units without a bedroom, separate bedroom, a studio, I guess what would be considered a studio apartment in today's nomenclature. There is one two-bedroom unit and three one-bed, oh, excuse me, two one-bedroom units. Uh, the carriage house units are, the two one-bedroom units are in the carriage house along with two efficiency units. Then you, uh, so we show the rent, an annual rent, projected rent, and then take out a 10% vacancy, which would be normal for a net, net operating income of $76,140. Uh, then if you look at expenses with utilities, um, the, uh, this is, you know, based on, uh, in some situations, the tenant does not pay for heating or water. Uh, and so we calculated that, some expense that's absorbed by the landlord. Then you have real estate taxes, insurance, maintenance of the building, and then garbage, uh, there's a dumpster that services the whole unit. And, and let me say something, well, we'll get to that later. And then management fees for the management of the, of the facility. And then just miscellaneous expenses, which includes the city's rental registration of $1,000 annually. So it shows the net expenses coming down to the net cash flow, which again, based on our cost here, is 13.23%, which is for a real estate investment of this type is a reasonable return for somebody to be willing to make this kind of investment. If you look at the second sheet, this is without the, uh, with no units in the carriage house. You have a purchase price of 150. And what's interesting is, and we have the contractor here to verify this, that if we cannot put units into the carriage house, there are four units there. They're physically constructed. So it's cheaper to renovate the existing units than it is to tear them all out and convert it to a garage because that's probably the only alternate use that could be in that building. And, and the estimated cost of that is 160,000. You have, uh, the house renovation of 130. Again, we've reduced the cost of the appliances because you wouldn't be putting new appliances in the carriage house. So you'd have a total cost of 450,000. And if you flip the page, it shows that there is eight efficiency units and one two-bedroom unit. And so they, showing the income, less the 10% vacancy and net operating income. Uh, then you have expenses, which, uh, utility, heating and water. Real estate taxes probably wouldn't change significantly. Uh, insurance would be, you know, maybe a little bit less. Uh, maintenance, uh, garbage is the same basically. Uh, management fees would be reduced. And the miscellaneous costs, we're keeping about the same dollar amount. So that you show the net cash flow. And what's interesting here is the return on investment without the units is less than 6%. And I can tell you, for spending 40 years involved with economic development with cities and, and commercial development, no developer or person who's interested in really re, developing property, particularly in the inner city, is gonna go do it for a 6% or less return. So the hardship is, the building is there. And I don't know if the city, when they did their analysis, did anything about, um, uh, looking at what the cost would be or what, what other uses there could be? I mean, the best, only thing we could come up with is you'd have to tear it out. And one of the problems of tearing out is that this is two floors. So you'd have to convert it back to, uh, the original, uh, I guess, carriage house that it was. By the way, the house was built in 1890. And we do know that in the 1930s, Frederick Klein, who's a very famous architect in Peoria, was hired to, that's when they converted the house into multi-units. And we, we don't know exactly when the carriage house got converted, but we're assuming it was around the same time. Uh, and, um, so, uh, these aren't, you know, normal units in the sense that there, there was a famous architect that actually helped convert this building in the 30s. And I can attest that a lot of the houses on our street, we have a single-family house. At one time, it was a nursing home. And I'm assuming it was approximately in about the same time and, you know, there was a shift in the, in the demographics of what was going on with the city. The, um, it's important to understand, oh, well, let me, this, and Shane Sharp is the petitioner. Shane, you've reviewed these numbers and helped create them. Are they accurate as far as you know?
Yes.
Okay. The, um, this is not, is a real desire to increase financial gain. Yes, when he purchased the property, he found out that morning that the city was coming back to say it was only 12, excuse me, nine units. And he was, at the day of the closing. Now, I'm not blaming the city, it, they, everything was moving very quickly, but it, because they had to wait until the end of the litigation to get this thing to move forward and, and get it going. But we're not here today because somehow we're ac, the, the petitioner's asking for an extraordinary profit. It should, the judgment should be, and I do this all the time for municipal clients, is making a judgment, is it a reasonable return for an investor of this kind of property to, is that what should be expected? And that's the judgment that should be made and that's what we are presenting to you. As far as that. The physical circumstances involved is that the, um, if he can't use the, the four units, which already exist, uh, basically the carriage house is worthless. And he has, like I said, spent $160,000 to renovate it. Uh, I asked Kim earlier if the, the city would just stipulate that there are four units in the building. Now, I'm. Now, I'm not saying there are four approved units, I'm just saying there are physically four units. We have video here that shows videos of each of the units, which we'd be happy to play for you, but if, you know, if there wasn't a general agreement that this thing is made, you know, there are four units in there and you, and they're separate and distinct units, I'd be happy then to proceed otherwise. In that regard, the, we'd like to present to you some photographs.
Up to the mic, if you could, give us your name on the record and your address, Shane, before you start.
Thank you, Kim. My name is Shane Sharp of 2509 West Manor Parkway.
What does the first photograph show?
First photograph shows the entryway to units 1A and 2A.
And the second photograph?
Would be the entrance to unit 3A.
Third or fourth?
It's the 4A.
Next photograph?
Meters, excuse me, these are meters for each of the four units individually. In this photograph, we show three of the four furnaces. Each of the units had their own furnace.
Little bit off the record, but while, while we're there, we, this is the property record, we gave you a copy of the surrounding property. The property 108 Roanoke is immediately behind you, right? It's a sort of a motel looking like building?
Yes.
And how many units are in there?
Sir, make sure you speak in the microphone clearly so we can hear it.
Shows 16.
The 259 Northeast Randolph, which is immediately adjacent with the carriage house that is occupied, how many units are in there?
We show 11 here. And 12.
Shane is the, can you walk from inside, once you're in one unit, can you walk to another unit just by opening a door, or are they connected?
Connected.
Is separate and distinct?
Yes.
I do have a question for the city, which is, if it's okay, which is whether or not they gave any consideration to what this carriage house could be used for.
And I'm going to stop you there and say, the commissioner can ask the city that question if necessary, but if not germane to this, these proceedings?
Well, it is germane as far as hardship is concerned.
Well, we're taking your testimony, so if you want to give testimony about what you view the hardship to be, that's fine, but we're not going to have you cross-examine city staff.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to get into a too long discussion on this, but if the city staff makes statements in their opinion of X, Y, and Z, we should be able to ask questions concerning what work they did, what they looked at in order to do that, but let's move on.
Thank you.
As I indicated, I know personally that there were, at least in 1981, when I moved in the neighborhood, there were four units in that building. Because we looked at, my wife and I, when we moved in, we went around the entire neighborhood. In addition, my wife has been the president of the homeowners association for most of that time since then and knows what's going on in terms of there. I might add that the neighborhood itself is, is very much in support of the request. We think that rehabbing these, and getting the whole thing renovated and stabilized is very important. We don't need more vacancies and second-rate operations going on in the neighborhood. It's hard work living there and we would not easily support somebody just coming in to add more units. Shane, does the request that you're making involve any construction or add-on to the size of the carriage house?
No, it's strictly renovation of what's already there.
So, in terms of looking at the neighborhood and whether there's an alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood, the side of the street that they're on in Roanoke, they're, the one house next to the human service center operation is single-family. Then you have Folvio Zurla's house, which is multifamily. You have Shane's, this property, which is multifamily. You have the house next door, which is multifamily. And you have the house on the corner, which is single-family. And on the other side of the street, it is, as far as I know, all single-family. Although we did have the Junior League house there, but it's now being renovated by a people for use as a single-family operation. The purpose of looking at numbers, the, we can talk about acreage, you know, how many units per acre, which makes no sense in these older neighborhoods where the houses have been redone. If, you know, if we could go back and say, gee, it'd be great if the city would come along and rezone everything to single-family and, you know, and there'd be a market for it. But we've been there for a long time and realized that there's a market for some of it, but there's certainly not a market for, for all of it. The people who have indicated an opposition, Mr. Zurla does not live even in the city of Peoria, he owns property there, he's a good landlord and he's a friend, but he doesn't live there. The only other opposition that was filed, that I'm aware of, we don't believe he lives in the neighborhood either. And so basically, the people in the neighborhood are supportive of what's here. What we don't want to see is just an empty building that sits there because somehow it can't be used and when it, when it was already constructed to use it as four units. Needs a lot of work, but if we go further, maybe we, the best way to do it, and then we'll be, I'll get close to closing up, is to show one of the videos, if we might? Which one do you think?
Uh, wait.
Do you get to the second to the left, Kim?
Hold on, the computer's...
Technical difficulties.
To the arrow.
You said second one?
Yeah, that one, just go up to the arrow and click it. This unit is, is two levels. She, she on the same one?
The next video over.
Yeah, he went to the next video over, he did something. By the way, these units all had kitchens and all had bathrooms in them.
Is there a way to go back to the previous video?
Just click on the arrow and then don't click anything else. Yeah, go up to the arrow.
Next one over, Kim, there you go.
Go up to that there and click on that. There you go. And then just don't touch the cursor. Sorry, I learned the hard way.